Okay, Darren, we've got four, so that should be a quorum.
All right.
Okay, we good to go?
Did you hear Kelsey? Can we hear her? Kelsey? Can we hear hers?
Yep, I can hear you guys.
Okay, we are, good.
All right, so we got a quorum, so we'll get the meeting started. We'll take a roll call.
Okay. Jeff?
Yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Craig? Craig Gatner? Kelsey?
Here.
Vern? Vern Johnson? Don Suter? We have a quorum of four.
Okay. We had received the prior meeting minutes, April. Any corrections or additions to those minutes? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
It's been moved, we have a second.
I'll second, but I have a question when we get to the discussion point on them.
Okay. Why don't you go ahead and what's your question?
My question is just, I don't know that I didn't approve the minutes. Maybe I wasn't on yet, but I'm not absent on approval of minutes and I was on the meeting. That's the only thing that asked through me.
Some prior ones?
Some prior ones.
It's not a big deal, I don't know that it matters, but I was at the meeting.
Well, I don't know what we do now. Okay, we'll note that.
Right. Then I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So I guess we need to take a roll call, Joe, I'm sorry. We'll take a roll call.
Okay. Jeff on the approval, okay. Laurel?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Craig? Kelsey?
Yes.
Vern? Don? Okay, minutes are approved.
Okay, we'll go to item number three, public hearing. Hearings, variance, Sundance Frontier Ventures. I guess I'll turn it over to Darren.
All right, so this is variance application from Frontier Ventures LLC for lot standards and replating of the current plat of Aspen to Sundance. We received this application on March 27th. Notice was published in the paper on the 15th and May 9th for this meeting, 13th of April for our past meeting, then of course the 14th this meeting. And we're holding a meeting tonight as well as our past one on 27th. And we did extend, so we have a little more time than 60 days for this. So they are asking for three variances for this replat. This area is within the R4 multiple family zoning district. The three variants specifically are to reduce the street setbacks of four corner lots on Western Avenue from 35 to 30 feet. To create one lot, which is described as Lot 12 here, not meeting the 10,000 square feet requirement, they are asking to be at 9,555. And then to create side yard setbacks of less than the required distance for all lots. The required setbacks in the R4 is 15 feet. And the applicant is asking for all lots to have a 10-foot side yard setback. Looks like Craig just joined us, so we'll get him admitted. So in the R4 multiple family district, section 154, it'll be 035, 215, multiple subdivisions, specifically in 234 variances, we can grant variances for deviations. There are three specific things for subdivisions, which are highlighted here as 1, 2, and 3. And then of course we have our standard, six standards that we look at for the other variance conditions, criteria. Purpose of the R4 multi-family district is intended to provide a district which allows multiple family dwellings such as apartments, real houses, townhouses, and the like in those areas where development fits the land use plan or properly related to other land uses and thoroughfares where municipal utilities are available. So a little background here, the original plat of Aspen here to be replatted consists of 27 parcels. The landowner is now looking to replat this area to accommodate larger parcels and change the road layout. The new plan is for 19 lots and a cul-de-sac off of Western instead of a through street. In this instance, this does make a little bit more sense due to the steep topography on the site, and then also Outlet B and C are shown as unbillable lots. The new design will also create straight or, you know, 90-degree angle corners and straight line lots as opposed to the angles which you see in the current plat. That plat identifies, or the plat identifies usage of single-family residential lots. This is R4 zone. You'll see this entire area and this entire plat is zoned R4. Obviously, single-family homes is a less dense use allowed in the R4. With the proposed lot width at 100 feet wide for majority of lots and having a 10-foot setback, this gives about 80 feet of buildable area between standard set. The standard 15-foot setback would mean about a 70-foot wide buildable area for those lots. There are other lots that are larger in width, and the rear setbacks all meet the 20% requirement. So here is a site plan and showing the current plat layout. You see the area here, 1 through 7, and then 1 through 9 here with Alapi, and then 1 through 10 here is the area to be replatted with, of course, Lauren Drive coming through here and then Joanna here. You see some multi-family units over here and some single-family over here. And then Otter Tail Drive on the south, Western on the north. Specifically for this variance, they're asking for 30-foot setbacks to Western Avenue, which is this area here, 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 and here for these four lots, instead of a 35, which of course would then push this buildable area, which is this dash line, down five more feet on these four lots. Lot 12 is the lot that is slightly under the 10,000 square foot requirement, is at 9,555 square feet. So like I said, this is the lot that shows that partially or mostly due to the cul-de-sac, obviously, a radius here coming in, creating some of this issue as well. And then of course, the 10-foot setbacks to all side property lines are shown here, you know, in all these lots. This is 10 feet instead of 15, which would then push the buildable area, these dash lines down, or a little more closer in between all of these, here and all of these. So this is the zoning map, so you can see this area we're talking is right here, which is this orange color, which is R4. You see here this red area, that's our B3 zone, and then this blue area here is our, if I remember, that's the B5 and 6 zone where the mall is. And then the green would be RA. So as you can see, there's really no industrial over here. It's surrounded by R4 entirely and then B, business zones. So having, changing the same thing else besides R4 would be zoning essentially because this is surrounded by all R4 residential. Of course, R4 residential does allow single-family development in it, it just of course allows for multi-family as well. So these are findings that support their request. If there are findings that, you know, you don't agree with here, then that would obviously guide nile of the request. What I did or how I laid this out is each original cluster, three others. I offered three findings, of course, for the three variances they're asking for. The first one is in relation to Lot 12 size. The second one is in relation to the 30-foot setback off of Western Avenue. And then the last one is the 10-foot side yard setbacks. So obviously, these were given out. I won't go through them at this time, you certainly can if there's any questions. We can go through these findings, like I said, obviously you have them in your staff report, and we're able to view them. I won't read them for the sake of time, but they are part of your record here. And of course, continued, this section talks, goes into the other criteria. We talk about the intent of the ordinance, compliance, which is applicable. And then the other standard criteria we typically find in our zoning variances. I guess to highlight some of the bigger ones, obviously, topography comes into play here. There is some slope, hence the cul-de-sac. Then being, the 35-foot setback does come from Western Avenue being a designated on our thoroughfare plan, which then requires the additional setback of 35 feet instead of 30. 30 is the normal setback. If it wasn't identified on our thoroughfare plan, then it would have been 30. The, so that's their thing. And then, of course, in the R4, the 15-foot setback, the 10-foot. When you look at the lot sizes here, topography, area, road layout, all that, those are kind of the major things, but as you read through, you'll see some of these other items, but those are kind of the gist of some of the main reasons. I did receive one letter for this plat at our first meeting that was read, and then I did receive a second letter from Jesse and Nikki Nelson and Todd and Connor Reinertson. Apologize if I said that wrong. This letter was given to the commission prior to meeting, and we will go, I can show that here, obviously during our public comment period, I can pull up that letter if we're going to read it. I do believe Brian, our city engineer, is online. If we have any questions for me or questions for Brian, I believe he is on here as well.
Okay, thanks Darren. First of all, before I open up the public hearing, I'll ask if there's any comments or questions from the commission.
Is Ryan able to speak a little bit to, it's Laurel, the concern that the neighbors raised in the letters about drainage and erosion and things like that going towards, I would believe it's Andrew Drive? Can you just give us some feedback on that, if that's legit concerns or what the city's position on that is specifically?
Yes, the comments are very legitimate comments, and this is quintessentially the impetus for chapter stormwater management, chapter 152. If you look through that, it's a pretty extensive chapter in regards to improvement of stormwater management, not only temporary but also permanent facilities for redevelopment or development within the city. Some of the concerns as drainage.
Brian, can you speak up please? Or get closer to your microphone, thank you.
Topography is a concern, and that's what we've been looking at. Number, some of the comments in there were in regards to the MPDS permit, the National Distress Elimination Act. This is, this particular development would qualify and would require a permit, like many projects we have, in regard to, and this is what we refer to as the development of a stormwater management plan, throughout construction, best management practices. But at the end of the day, final restoration with grading, storm sewer network, along with permanent stormwater facility. We believe Outlet B and existing stormwater pond that is located, well, pretty much east of Outlet B would be a prime area for enhancing a stormwater pond to meet this development. One thing I want to point out with stormwater, in our code, post developmental stormwater runoff cannot exceed pre-development. That is a key feature that would be adhered to on this particular project. That being said, so yes, they're creating new impervious acres on this vegetative land currently right now. Because of that, the design would entail curb and gutter, grading plan, which can bays a lot of the water to the street, and it would also include storm sewer piping that would convey the water runoff into the preliminary pond that we have approximately location. Some of these other items that noted are good to note and things that we could look into. We've already begun, we haven't officially because it's in this plat, but typically, if approved, we would sit down with the developer with some of these known, potentially known issues. In regards to the abutting properties, I can envision that we would be doing very typical, but doing some backyard storm sewer catch basins and try to convey that water to the proposed Joanna Court and eventually into the stormwater pond to help reduce that post developmental runoff, which it can exceed for our ordinance.
Thanks, Brian. Anybody else have any comments or questions before we open the public hearing? If not, we'll open up the public hearing. If anybody would like to address the commission, please state your name and address.
And this is Darren, I have unmuted everyone. Please make sure your computer or your phone is unmuted before you try to speak. I said it's unmuted on my end, so if you are still muted, it may be on your end.
Okay, so anybody from the public, would they like to address the commission? Anybody? If not, we'll bring it back to the commission for a vote.
I'll make a motion to approve.
You got a motion?
I'll second.
We got a motion in a second?
I think somebody's trying to talk.
Is there, I think there's someone trying to say something, can you hear us, I heard?
Are the, I'm not sure who it is, though.
We can still go into discussion.
The Nelsons, looks like the Nelsons are trying to speak.
They are unmuted now.
Is there a cell phone number we can give them to see if they can call in on that? I just don't want to miss any public comment.
Yeah, Nelsons, for whatever reason, your sound is not coming through well, we cannot hear you. Can you call 312-626-6799 to get onto the Zoom call?
Are you able to hear now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, this is Mickey Nelson. And our address is 105 Andrew Drive. And we could hear some of what Brian was saying, but he was very quiet in his comments. And so I just would again like to ask if with these setbacks, does that ensure enough space to properly place these drainage and have enough space for the easements that are required?
Darren or Brian, you want to answer that?
Well, I can say, you know, there is a 20-foot rear yard setback. He did mention rear stormwater. With easements, we would look at that in the final plat. There's going to be required easements for utilities and stormwater that would all be addressed in the final plat process.
There is no public hearing prior to that, though, correct?
Correct.
So this is essentially our last time to voice our concerns and get them addressed prior to them starting. There's already equipment out here.
This is Brian from the city engineer here. I'm not aware of equipment being out there. I would have to check, but there is, I'm not aware, there's not been any plans or anything approved at this time.
Okay, because there was, NCS was out dumping quite a bit of stuff up by the townhomes, and there is equipment down at the lower portion of the lot by Otter Tail Drive.
And I believe, I'm not aware there is any equipment. There is nothing authorized in regards to this plat. The utilities have not been designed, the final grading plan. There's not been any authorization to proceed with any work in regards to this plat that I'm aware of.
Okay, it's just concerning with the amount of runoff that we have out here already. You know, I'm not an engineer and I won't say that I am, but I want to make sure that these easements with the side setbacks are going to be able to properly provide us the protection that we need.
What recourse does a homeowner have if, say that it needs to be the same, no further runoff than was there pre-development? Once this is all said and done and the buildings are up and the yards are in, what recourse, if there is more, could these homeowners have, would be a question I have? Or does the city step in at that point, or how is it handled?
Yes, this is Brian from the city. Yes, we've retained a local firm, professional engineering firm, to assist with the design. What part of the design will include a stormwater, like I mentioned, a stormwater management plan with all the calculations derived to determine these post and pre and post developmental runoffs that I'm referring to. Keep in mind, under a professional engineer's license, we do have a statute of limitations that we have to adhere to as well during being a professional licensed holders. And these plans will be designed in accordance to chapter 152 of our stormwater management plan, and they'll also be certified by professional licensed engineers.
This is still difficult to determine, correct, due to the fact that there is so much vegetation there right now, so you can do your best estimate as of what the runoff will be, but you won't know until... I mean, essentially, it could be too late before you would know how much runoff.
We would have to design it accordingly. Then if our calculations tell us we're generating this amount in previous, there's numerous ways when it comes to a stormwater management plan, how I mentioned, like on the road, well, it'll have curb and gutter. That's a conveyance measure to direct the water into the catch basins inlets, as there is not right now. Subsequently, just like storm sewer pipe with the catch basins in the backyard, if they're placed accordingly to capture that drainage and control it and direct it into a permanent stormwater pond, that is going to be applicable for the site.
And this is reevaluated continuously throughout construction?
During construction, yes, there is a construction plan that, and that's, I believe, in reference in one note to the MPC's MPDS permit. That plan specifically has minimal requirements that has to show in the plan to enable the construction of it. It essentially terminates, it becomes active once land disturbance activities commence, and it becomes deactive once adequate turf restoration is established. Either permanent turf restoration or final, the house is built or done.
Okay, is there any other questions before the vote? We have a motion in a second on the table, any other discussion? If not, all the...
Can we make it, Laurel, can, or can someone clarify Laurel's question and the answer that was received? As what recourse we have available to us as current homeowners? If something were to occur?
Darren, I guess I defer that to you.
It would be a question for your, you know, it'd be a civil matter where you'd have to, you know, if there's an issue that the city had with our rules, like Brian said, we would address it on our end. If there was something that a neighbor did to you, it'd be something that you would need to seek out with an issue with your neighbor, you know, if they caused damage to your property, that kind of thing. So it depend on, that's a very open-ended question. Know what specifically is the issue? Is it something that the overall plan issue, or is it something that your neighbor specifically did? You know, did they divert water purposely? That becomes a civil matter between people. So it'd be very dependent upon the facts of the matter.
Okay, so even though we brought these concerns up prior to the development starting, we have no history of water issues to our home. You're stating it wouldn't be, the development wouldn't be the reason if we were to start having water issues?
What I'm saying is, is the plans that are in place that are reviewed are to handle that situation.
Okay.
Okay.
We should, Mr. Chair, we should formally close the public hearing if that's the desire or that, and then entertain that motion.
Okay, I will, I'll ask it one more time if there's any other public comments before we close the public hearing. If not, the public hearing's closed. We'll bring it back for a roll call.
Can we rehear that motion for the sake of everyone?
Can you reread that?
Mr. Chair, can you just reiterate?
Yeah, we'll reread that here in a second. Can you read the motion?
Commissioner Kilty made a motion to recommend and approve the variance requested by Frontier Ventures LLC, including the findings as presented, seconded by Commissioner Rachels.
Okay. Okay, let's take roll call.
Okay. Okay, this is roll call for the public hearing for the variance for Sundance plants. Jeff?
Yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Yes.
Craig? Kelsey?
Yes.
Vern? Don? Okay, we have a majority, so it passes.
Okay. The next item is preliminary plat, Sundance Frontier Ventures here.
So again, he has a lot of the same information here. The notices were, or the actual replating itself. So they're looking to replat this area, which is currently part of Aspen. Sorry, there we go. This area is R4 multiple family. I will go through this maybe a little faster than before, just because we talked about some of this information already. Again, .035 is R4 and .215 is subdivisions. Again, the purpose of the R4 multi-family residential district. So the original plat in this area is 27 parcels. They are looking to replat to accommodate larger parcels and change the road layout, much like we talked about before. And here is the preliminary plat drawing showing the new layout. Again, here's the zoning map showing the areas with our area here, this orange area being the R4, along with all of this being R4, some of this. Yeah, here are some proposed findings. If there are findings that you don't agree with here, then that would help guide in the other direction towards not recommending approval. Again, assuming the variance that we just recommended, that it would meet the criteria of the ordinance in terms of setbacks and sizings. This would be serviced by utilities that are in the area. The grading stormwater has been preliminary viewed. This area is plied for residential development currently, and this replating will make for lots to follow more of today's development styles. The change of the road design... The change of the road design allowed for less grading work due to this deep topography in that area. And then lastly, the plat will not be detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of the community since they... sizing requirements off of Western. The grading storm plan will be fully reviewed and permitted by the engineering department and also the state and PBS permitting. There's a decrease in the number of overall lots and an increase in lot size. So it'll be less density than what was plotted currently. And the lots will have a dwelling size for today's construction style. Again, we did receive the one letter at our first meeting, and then we did receive that second letter again, and I can pull that up. You guys did receive it prior to the meeting. And that's here, we can certainly go through all those concerns. Are there any questions? We talked a lot about this, I guess, obviously, a lot of the concerns. Our last one.
Are these getting assessments at this time or have these lots all been previously assessed?
Or...
Like water sewer road, things like that? Or did that happen with the development previously?
I guess I'm not sure of that information.
This is Brian here. To my, to the best of my knowledge right now, with a developer similar to past, work with him, to have an assessments, he would have to initiate a petition with the city for the financing construction. Based on conversations thus far, I, that has, developers proposing to finance improvements to this property.
Any other questions from the commission? If not, we'll open up the public hearing. Again, as before, if you would like to speak, please state your name and address.
I just unmuted everyone, so if you unmute yourself to ensure that's done.
We'll make one more call for a public comment. One more call. If none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. We'll need a motion.
So moved.
You got a motion? You got a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, roll call.
Okay, the Sundance preliminary plat. Jeff?
Yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Craig? Kelsey?
Yes.
Vern? Don? Motion passes.
Okay, we'll go to the next item, rezone application, B2 to I2 GS Holdings.
So this is an application asking to rezone 20% of land from B2, the service, business service district to the I2 industrial district. The property is located at 504 and 520 Public Drive, the parcel numbers. Again, this application was issued on April 29th. We published in the May 11th in the paper. We notified all the neighbors on the 16th, and we're here tonight having our meeting. So we're Chapter 154, 37, B2 Service District. The I2 is .042, and then .020 is zoning amendments. So a little bit of law review. They're guided by Minnesota Statute 462.357, as well as our city code in O2O. The zoning map may be amended whenever public necessity and convenience or general welfare requirement amendment. In this instance, the applicants are asking for the amendment. The landowners, I'll just say. We must hold a public hearing on it, which we're doing tonight. We'll give a recommendation to council, and then we cannot condition rezones. So the purpose of the B2 Service District is intended to provide a district for a wide range of services and goods which may be incompatible if the use is permitted in a retail business district. Is intended for the B2 Business Service, Service Business District to be located in separate areas which may be adjacent to other retail business districts or close proximity to a major thoroughfare. Purpose of the I2 Industrial District is the general industrial district, which is intended to provide a district which is to allow general industrial uses which due to their size and nature would not conform to a planned industrial, which is the I1. The applicant is looking to establish a business on the bare parcel of land which you see here that would require industrial zoning. They've indicated in their application that they're looking to do rental storage buildings. The parcel that currently has a structure on it is a contractor's yard for their plumbing business. This type of business is allowed in the B2, and it's also allowed in the I2. Being that the proposed use is not allowed in the B2, storage, rental storage buildings are not allowed in B2, the applicants are asking to rezone the property in order to establish the new use. So here's our current zoning map. This area is the two parcels that we are discussing tonight. Everything in this orangish color is B2. The blue here is the I industrial zone. And then this green would be the RA agricultural residence zone. And then this would be the, this is R1. So as you can see, the industrial and B2 zone meet here on the center line of Pebble Lake Road and intersection of 210. So the idea here would be this is directly adjacent to, which is across the street of industrial zoning. So the subject property is designated as B2 on the 2030 future zoning map. And in the same area, the I2 zone is still across the street. Again, here, this is the gray box showing the two parcels. So this is our 2030 map showing, you know, future land use. So again, this is still shown as industrial, and this is still shown as B2. Again, here are some proposed findings shown for recommended approval. Again, if you don't agree with some of these, then that gives you a reason to recommend a denial when discussing different findings. So the property is currently Zoned B2. The property to the east of this parcel is I2. The feature map identifies this area as B2 with I2 zoning across the street. The parcel meets all the size criteria of the I2. The use of this property would be consistent with the industrial zone and industrial uses that are permitted on the adjoining parcels. And the parcel directly above is I2 Zoned property, therefore it's not considered spot zoning. I did receive one call prior to this meeting. That was from Todd Knusen at 1602 Pebble Lake Road. He is the owner of the motel. He objects to this rezoning due to the front setback being 20 feet less than if it were changed to an I2 zone, and that the property could affect sidelines, and there would be still three sides of this parcel would be B2 zones surrounding this property. That was the comment I received on this, and that's all I have for you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission? For Darren?
Is there a reason it couldn't go to I2 to address that setback? Or what are the pros and cons between the two zones?
So what was the first part of that?
It says if 20 feet less if it were changed to I2 zone, what are the differences?
Sure, so in the B2 zone, the ordinance calls out a 20-foot setback from the front. In the industrial zone, that goes away. The side yard setback goes from 15 up to 20, but the front setback to the road right of way is less. So by virtue of rezoning, theoretically, they could build closer to the road than if it were B2. Does that make sense?
It does, thank you. What does the front setback go to?
There isn't one unless you need parking. It's the, there is no front yard setback in the I industrial zone unless parking is required.
I guess that, that personally would be a concern for me with a neighboring business raising that concern? Because his visibility will change. I mean, is there, are there other options versus I can't get, we can't put conditions on rezoning, but are there other options that could address that concern to handle that?
Not in a rezoning standpoint. Obviously, if they got a building permit, you know, I don't know what their plans are. And of course, obviously, they can obviously change in the future. But, and when you're looking at, you know, when you're looking at, you know, rezoning, you need to look at kind of all the uses that are within this, allowed within the zone because, you know, obviously, you know what they're proposing, but obviously, any use within the I2 zone is what could be permitted here. You know, by rezoning it to that. So you'd kind of have to look at all of the uses that could be in there. When you look at the I2... Give me one second here. Front yard, there should be no front yard required except as required to provide parking and loading, as required of parking and loading requirements. So there is no front yard setback. Unless it's across the street from a residential zone, which here it wouldn't be. Side yard, it would be the required 25 feet to a side yard. And then there's no rear yard, oh, excuse me, then 30 feet to a rear yard property line. Versus when you get into the B2 zone... One second here, get back up to B2. Front yard, it's 20 feet from the road right of way is the front yard. Side yard, it's 10 feet. So it's more of side yard industrial than, and then it's less front and industrial. And then rear yard, it's 20 feet in the B2. Again, those are setbacks that would be, you know, reviewed, obviously, for any building permitting wise.
How do you review them for building permit if it, if they come in and it's within the zone? You'd have to say yes to that, don't you?
Correct, if it meets the requirements, yes.
So you could review it, but they basically can go right up to the road right of way with the building permit?
Yes.
Okay, if there's another questions from the commission, I'll open up the public hearing. If anybody would like to address the commission, please state your name and address.
I just unmuted everyone, so again, if anyone wishes to speak.
Okay, doesn't sound like it one more time? If not, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. What's the commission's wishes?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Scott made a motion to approve, and we have a second? Can I say? Can I do a second?
I'm not sure.
Yeah. I'll second that. Take roll call. Well, first, is there any other discussion? If not, Jill will take roll call.
Okay. Okay, on the rezoning request for, from a B2 to an I2 for GNS Holdings Bond Properties? Jeff?
Yes.
Laurel?
Sorry, yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Craig? Kelsey?
Yes.
Vern? Don? Motion passes.
All right, thank you. Next item, the CUP application.
All right, so this is a conditional use permit to have a digital messaging center within 400 feet of a residential zone. This is in the B2 zone. You received this on May 7th. We published May 9th. We notified everyone on May 8th, and we are here tonight having our meeting. So conditional use permits are in Section 019, along with our general provisions under 176, electronic messaging signs. They are permitted in all non-residential zoning districts, subject to the following limitations. That goes into 173, which is in the B2, B3, and B4, which we are in the B2 here. So this goes into the size allowance for signs. You're allowed two square feet per linear foot of road fringe, or 15 feet in the building front, or 75 square feet in area, whichever is greater. So you're allowed at least 75 square feet or more, depending on how much road frontage you have. So conditional use permits, we have, well, the purpose is to give flexibility in order to achieve and object to corporate supplying goals in certain districts. Initial uses are permitted, subject to the granting of a use permit. Initial uses include those uses generally not suitable in a particular zoning district, but which may, under circumstances, be suitable. When the circumstances exist, a conditional use permit may be granted. So then we have I-AMD, which talk about our standards, which go through 1 through 8, which are criteria in order to grant a conditional use permit. And I will go through these since they were in your report. Then we have specific standards just for electronic messaging signs that are within 400 feet of residential zone. There we allow, specifically, if you go to subpart 3, which I have bolded here. So they're permitted within 400 feet of residential zoning, as long as you get A as conditional use permit. The applicant demonstrates that the impact to residential properties will be minimal. The applicant agrees to turn off all electronic messaging centers signed between 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM, unless the applicant can demonstrate that the sign in question will not be visible from any residential zone property. And the client commissioner requires additional restrictions to minimize the impact on adjacent residential property. It also goes into, you know, no blinking, scrolling flashing lights. It has to display the message for at least six seconds at a time. Also, they need to be equipped with automatic dimming technology that adjusts to the brightness. And then it goes through a brightness level here, which we won't go into the math, but it does need to meet that, so it needs to be shown as part of the permit when they apply for the actual permit that it meets that brightness requirement. And then obviously, it can't look like any emergency vehicle colors or anything like that to indicate potential problems with emergency vehicles. A little background here. So Patrick Conley is the owner of Dairyland. They're looking to replace their current static letter signage, I'll call it, with an electronic messaging center. This EMS sign would be located beneath their current Dairyland sign. One side of the sign would sit at an angle to help with sightlines for drivers going by due to the location of the existing sign in proximity to the building. This would be a similar sign that you could see at Taco John's in the old center in recent years. The intent is to have a sign no larger than 4 by 10 and for it to follow all of the standards of the zoning code that I just discussed. And this does need a CUP due to neighboring R2 zoning within 400 feet of the parcel, or the sign itself, excuse me. And the parcel is highlighted in red in this next slide. So as you can see, this is the Dairyland parcel. Across the street, we have our residential zoning in the park. And of course, to the right of there, we have R2 zoning. So here are some views. So this is if you're looking south, obviously, here's Dairyland, and here's the signage with this board beneath. This is what they'd be looking to replace. Here's the view looking north. You can see, obviously, the park over here on our left, and then Casey's. Taco John's would be here, you can see their sign, and then the old center sign down here. Need to reference. Here's a bit of a drawing of kind of the idea. One side, obviously underneath their, their current Dairyland sign, something that looks kind of like this. And the other side would be angled, at about a 20-degree angle. the other side would be angled at about a 20-degree angle, again, to have that sightline, and the applicant can certainly, is online, and can certainly speak to why that angle would be necessary when we get to that point. So again, the proposed findings, feeling approval. Again, if you don't agree with a statement here that guides you towards recommending, creating a finding or recommending denial. These are the eight criteria questions for conditional use permits specifically. Again, it gets into public health, safety, and welfare. It gets into the lighting, destruction of compatible with the neighborhood, and the central character of the neighborhood. Gets into those. You see these in my report. Again, those are the conditions the applicant has stated he, you know, will meet those other criteria with this sign. So if you do recommend approval, two conditions on this permit that I recommend would be must abide by local and state laws regarding signage. So if there were brightness issues that conflict with our code, there would be a condition here that would, you know, our local code must be followed. And then the signage is to be used for onsite advertising only. I did not receive any comments or calls prior to this meeting on this request. And that is all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission? If not, we'll open up the public hearing. If anybody would like to address the commission, please state your name and address.
Patrick, do you want to go first? Is there anything you would like to add?
No, I just want to thank you for your time just to review it. What we're looking at as far as that sign is, is just going through going through the process where we've been here since 1955 and just slowly starting to upgrade. Our original sign that was back there in the 50s was just a plastic yellowboard sign. We put letters on it. Just trying to, trying to continue to make the, make the property look presentable with everybody else in the neighborhood.
Thanks, Pat. Any other comments? If not?
I did notice a question for Pat, Mr. Chair, if that's okay?
Yep.
I, I did notice that it refers to the sign operating and being operational even when you're closed in the winter. I wonder, it would be just for your business, I would assume, no advertising you refer to, but?
Absolutely. What we would do, what we would do in the winter months would be, if there's a community event that was going on, that would be, you know, just something similar to office food and how, how Park reading telephone does things for, for the community. We would do something on that line. I would anticipate around Christmas time, we'd, we'd have a message that would just be a fun greeting from us, and, and I know my wife's birthday is January 24th. I doubt I'd have to embarrass her that day. Just stuff like that, just to make it fun, more of the community aspect. As we get close to opening up, then we'd get the teaser that, that, you know, two months, and you're going to get an ice cream cone again. Beyond that, I don't see any reason why we would advertise, except for when our boys go to hockey, they go to state for hockey, and then the girls go to state for basketball.
All right, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. What's the commission's wishes?
I move to, this is Kelsey. I move to approve with Darren's conditions recommended.
Laurel, second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, we'll take roll call.
Dairyland Electronic Messaging Center Conditional Use Permit. Jeff?
Yes.
Laurel?
Yep.
Scott?
Yes.
Craig? Kelsey?
Yes.
Vern? Don. Motion passes.
Thank you. Darren, is there any upcoming applications?
So we do have our special meeting on the 2nd for that ordinance amendment review. I would anticipate a final plat, obviously, if it does get approved by council, but I don't have anything at this point right now in front of me, but, let's see. Yeah, so that's all I have. I said, there's nothing at this point.
Any new business? Nope. Old business? Darren, were you going to bring up any of the uses in B3 zone discussion, or is that for another time?
Again, I think it'd be wise that once we're able to sit down, we haven't had anyone pressing come in on that. Nothing's been brought in, so no one's really pushing anything at this point. And I think it'd be great once we're all able to sit down and, again, to review, to do that discussion.
Okay. Do you have any other updates, Darren?
Not that I can think of. Any questions? Of me? Trying to think. I guess I don't have anything at this point to update on. Lots of garage questions coming. Just a general update on, I guess, zoning, lots of garage additions or garage questions, a few fence questions, which is very similar to many of our communities that we work with, lots of garage and fences. I think a lot of people are at home thinking about things, you know, what we're about to do. We ask the uptick and inquiries from our general zoning stuff.
Okay. Are there any city council updates? Nope. Jeff? Okay. We're still, we're still having a special meeting next Monday, is that right? June 2nd.
Yes.
Okay. Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Okay. Thank you.
Next Tuesday.
Yeah. Okay, if there's nothing else, we'll adjourn. Thanks, everybody.
Everybody.
Thank you.